All rise for the pledge brought to us today by our RO2C junior RO2C from Garfield High School.
Ready, arms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Raise your arms. Ready, cut. Post. March. Close. Arms. Close colors. Ready, two. Close.
Since we have a little bit of a bigger audience today, would you like to introduce them again? They do such a good job, I hate to just let them go.
So commanding the color bar today is Cadet Somerville.
The junior next year, Cadet Conley, Cadet Peaks, and Cadet Town are over.
Takes many of them, but all, I think all of them have jobs too, so over the summer I came over here and did real well for them.
We are very grateful to have them again this summer come from Garfield's junior RO2C to lead us in the pledge and give up part of their summer to be with us. We are going to move on to community and school reflections. It's been kind of a summertime vacation time out there, but does anyone have anything they'd like to share about things they've done in the community? Yes?
I had a privilege last week in going to DCLC to talk to students in Mr. Mike Lotto's health class about driver's education, statistics on teen drivers, auto insurance, and things of that nature, so it was kind of half hour talking with kids and had some good questions from the students as well, so it was a nice morning spent there. It was a little bit early for me and for the students, I think, we all had a little fog in our eyes, but it was a good morning.
Did any of them ask why insurance costs so much more for boys?
Not that specific question.
Bet their parents would.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Anything else? Alright, I know we're in the middle of summertime, so. We do have some requests to address the board today. Is Mr. Hunter, Ms. Angersall, and Mr. Tucker are all three here?
Right.
Okay, great. Just because I have you alphabetically on my list, if that's okay, we can go in that order, or if you all want to come up together, I'm not sure how you planned to speak, so, okay. Mr. Hunter, do you want to go first? Thank you. If you have anything that involves naming persons, students, or anything like that, do you have any people that you need to?
Call me some thanks.
Some thanks, well, that's, we like thanks. We'll take that in an open session, for sure.
I'm Theodore Hunter, I'm a wrestling coach for the middle school of Bokto. My past, from my past experience with Bokto Middle School, I understand we must reach our youth at the earliest age possible to teach proper discipline, structure, and positive focus to prevent some of the problems that interfere with educational processes. In observing the fact that we have many single mothers that need good male role models, mentors, and men of good character to help guide their children, in particular their boys, on the path to productive adulthood. There are areas some mothers raising boys are unfamiliar with, or they've overlooked some of these needs. Boys need help addressing these areas before they enter middle school. Areas such as self-control, discipline, manners, hygiene, respect for themselves, and authority. These tenants must be adhered to before the educational and learning processes can begin. I feel we can be of great benefit here. Wrestlers have little access to equipment and facilities during the off-season, as well as other sports. To be able to hone their skills effectively for the competitive season, we need these. Everything necessary to turn disadvantages into advantages and opportunities are right at our convenience. We believe we can all benefit if we help and support one another. We have good coaches, we have good athletes, and good community support. Bokto staff and administration have been exceptional in helping to bring our intentions to fruition. Working with Bokto Learning Center students and staff has been one of the most challenging, yet gratifying experiences I've encountered in my 53 years associated with the fine art of amateur wrestling. I've learned much and greatly appreciated the help, the support, and the friendships that I've developed there. I would also like to thank administration and the Bokto staff for their support. Please continue. My sincere thanks to our coach, Mr. Richard Decatur, of the Bokto Youth Wrestling Program, for his guidance and his leadership. Also, Bokto High School coach, Mr. Robert Hubbard, for recommending me for the middle school position. And thank you all for listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hunter, thanks for your time today and for coming to talk to us about that program. Ms. Angersall? I neglected to tell Mr. Hunter, but he was brief anyway, do you have three minutes? The board doesn't generally address you and ask questions. The superintendent will get back in touch with you then, but we have three minutes for each of you.
Each one of us.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll give you a heads up when you get to a minute. When you have one minute left, I'll give you a heads up.
I'll remove this so that you know I do have a face. I'm Ed Tucker, I live across the street from the old Harris Elementary School, as does Ms. Angersall. We've lived there, my wife and I, for 28 years. There's seven families right along Pittkin Avenue, adjacent to the old Harris Elementary School, that have suffered from the teardown of the school. The school was in disrepair for a long time and stood empty for several years, and very little was done to take care of it. The problem now stands that even though the school is gone, there's very little maintenance going on, there's been some grass planted on the schoolyard, very sparingly, more weeds are growing than grass. Along the fence line, there's a lot of weeds over knee-high. A lot of kids hang out there at night, especially in the playground equipment. There's a house across the street from the school now that seems to be selling drugs, at least from our observance. That is not your problem, though. One of the problems is there's a rusty old 10-foot tall fence, still intact, between us and the schoolyard. There's an old swing set that is still there, but the swings are no longer there, and that does need to be removed. I'm not going to tolerate squeaky swings on that playground anymore, we did for 20-some years, it's time they disappear. Our concern is who's going to address the security issues around the schoolyard now that the school is gone? Who's going to maintain the grass on the schoolyard, maintain a good appearance of it? These are problems that we face every day. Since the school was torn down, dust control was done minimally during the teardown, our houses are filthy, inside and out. We need some help cleaning them. That is something that I'd like the school board to address. Also, the entire time that the school was there and in session, the lack of security and the lack of taking care of the property was severely noticed by us, and I fear there'll be even less security and less care for the property now that it's gone. The company that did tear it down, last thing they did before they planted seed was they buried about a 10-ton piece of concrete in the middle of the field, so if anything's done with that property, somebody's going to have a surprise. And what we'd like to see is that the property be sold off in lots so that single-family dwellings can be put there and that the neighborhood can be improved upon instead of just a vacant lot. Thank you.
My name is Gladys Angersall. To Mr. James, who's the president of the school board, superintendent of the school board, and the president of the school board. My concern, I moved there in 1962, and you can imagine how long, although those have math, you know how long that's been. I've been living there, when Mr. Tucker moved there and the rest of my neighbors. I put up with that for years, with the school being there, with the swings and all of that. Now, we are concerned about that school frame being, that swing frame being moved, the mulch being taken away, and those railroad tires. We would like to see that removed and have eleven off and put grass there. Not the young children there, it's the older ones that sit there. They use it as their social item, they sit there, they drink, they smoke whatever they want to smoke. We live about not 50 feet from that, I can sit there on my porch. I would just encourage you to drive by there and just see how close we are to that, you know, the swing set, because you, yourself, you wouldn't want to live there, now that the school's gone, you wouldn't want that in your front yard. I would like to sit on my front porch in the morning and drink coffee, sometime I would like to sit on my front porch in the evenings and relax, but I can't do it. The younger guys are out there, they're drinking their beer, they're throwing their bottles everywhere, and which, it's not the young children, it's the older ones. Now, that, I can't go over there, you know, I'm in my 80s, so I can't go and pick up the paper and the bottles. I'm looking at paper now, it's not most of the children in the neighborhood, the kids come from everywhere. So what we would like to do, my, I would like for you to clean my front door, my star door. It's been there, you can't buy those type of doors anymore, I can't get up there and clean it. I have hardwood floors and my carpet, my rug is filthy from the last time they were there, so we need somebody to clean that and clean my front door. So thank you, I hope you consider, to consider removing all of that from in front of our doors, because we are the ones that suffer from that, not the people around on the next street and the people in different areas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Alright, today I have the great pleasure of welcoming back one of our former members, Ms. Ginger Baylor is here, and she is going to recognize some of our Globe students. Ginger.
Thank you, Lisa. Will you join me on? I am.
We're so glad to have you, yes?
It's glad, I mean, it's good to be back, I don't know. Okay, I think I'm loud enough. Okay, it's good to be back in the boardroom, seeing all my friends and fellow administration and also fellow board members. It's a great feeling to be here, and Jack, you're retiring, oh my gosh! I don't know how I feel about that, but anyway. It gives me great pleasure to be here on behalf of U.S. Representative Marsha L. Fudge to award congressional recognition to some very special students who were guided in an initiative by none other than Mr. Steve France. So without further ado, I am going to read this proclamation, and then we're going to award those students with personal proclamations from the Congresswoman herself. Congressional recognition presented to Globe Learning Expedition. Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. Nelson Mandela. It is a pleasure to acknowledge you, four students, for being selected to represent the United States at the Globe Learning Expedition in New Delhi, India this summer. Your project, Urban Heat Island Effect, local issue of global problem, demonstrates your ability to excel in the 21st century global marketplace. On behalf of the citizens of the 11th Congressional District of Ohio, I am pleased to join Roswell Kent Middle School in recognizing your accomplishments. It is an honor to encourage you to continue to pursue your dreams, and may your pursuit of excellence shape you into future leaders. United States House of Representatives dated this 14th day of July 2014, Marsha L. Fudge, U.S. Member of Congress. So as I read your names, please come up and receive this recognition, you'll receive something from myself and also from school board president, Lisa Mansfield. Noren Ta, could you please come up?
Noren is in Finland, visiting her grandmother.
You did say that.
Should be back in four days.
Alright, four days. So I'll make sure that you get this, Mr. France, so you can pass it along. Next awardee, Mai C. Lor.
When did I leave? How long did you be there?
Two weeks.
Okay, stay at home.
I'll stay up here.
Okay, next awardee. We'll have Wendy Vargas. And our third awardee that's present this evening is Hang Nan Ai. Hang Nan Ai.
Okay. So, do you want to tell us a little bit about their project, or have them tell us a little bit about how they got picked?
They did it.
So you guys want to share? Why do you get to go to India? I've never been to India, tell them why you get to go.
So, earlier this school year, we, the Globe program held a national science competition, and...
You're doing great.
And we, we got interested in it, and so we, and so we just all started working together, and we, since we only had a limited time, we wanted to do our project on urban heat island effect, if it was a local issue or a local problem. And we, we first got the idea for this, for this project, because back in 2008, Mr. France also took his kids to South Africa, and they also did, they also did urban heat island effect too, so that's how we got to, that's how we got to our project. And we contacted schools from Greece, and some from New York, and, and a bunch of other schools from Ohio to help us collect data. And what we did was we collected surface temperature, data on asphalt, and then we compared our cities with our country size to see which, to see on how come cities tend to be warmer than country.
Good job. Can we give them another round?
Can I just throw one, one other comment in?
Please.
Mai and Noren also, they, when they, when they were in sixth grade, they started doing artwork for the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and they continued that artwork through seventh grade, and the culmination of that project is they developed an educational deck of cards on sharks for Noah, and the two of these girls will be featured August 10th for Shark Week with the Discovery Channel and...
Thank you so much. Now, as much as we would like to have you all stay to be enlightened by the excitement of the rest of our meeting, you can feel free to step out if you'd like and go do something wonderful like the Path for India. Thank you so much for your time, and we would love to hear how your trip went. Would you want to write us a quick note that says we would love to know more? Yeah, or have you come back and tell us? Alright, alright.
They have a blog, I'm sure we'll, we'll get to you guys, see you guys.
Please send us a link, I would love to.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be great.
My apologies, I missed the grade levels.
Oh, yes.
They're in seventh grade going into eighth grade this year. So I get them one more year.
Thank you so very much. Alright, moving on to the rest, to the meet, the meetier portion, or the less meaty portion of our meeting, we need approval for our meeting minutes from June 23, 2014. Moved improperly seconded, any questions about that? Alright, hearing non-roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
This is what, we're going to have, sorry.
The 23rd, June 23rd.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller, yes, Mrs. Simmons.
Thank you. Moving on to the superintendent's recommendations.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 52 personnel recommendations. Note that in item number 11, the time schedule should be 5:22, which is a year-round schedule. Other than that, these recommendations are in proper form and I request their approval.
No move. Second.
Moved improperly seconded, any questions?
Question?
Yes.
Can we explain the three positions and what they're for?
Yes. Yeah, the Network Systems Coordinator, our previous network manager retired, left for other employment, that position's been vacant for some time, and if you've known some of the problems we've had with our network and email, we need to replace that position. The Technology Support Specialist, these are more classroom support and curriculum support people, with all of our curriculum adoptions that have digital content, and with all of our testing and continuing to rely on e-school for data, we really need a person in the building to support our teachers with some of that technology, and it's different from the Technology Coordinator, because that position, you know, you depend on the teacher who has free time at lunch or their planning period. We need support all day. And then the Technology Support Manager, that's the person who will coordinate and supervise the Technology Support Specialists across the district. The Support Manager and Support Specialist positions are short-scheduled, they only work during the school year, right? But the Network Person, that, that position has to be year-round.
Okay, and so the Technology Manager and Specialist, they will be in charge of all the schools?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
As a follow-up, and I know it's probably redundant, but that was something I had a question on as well, and over the course of the time, from when this person left, that was previously filling that position, who's been picking up the slack?
We've had Piphony Management Group provide support, and then the current staff in the department have been providing that support.
I guess I'm wondering, is that something that, since someone's been filling that need, not that they would do two jobs for the same price, but would there be any, based on the experience the person has gained over the vacancy, high rate minimum as, as the person, or how's that being looked at?
No, I don't think so, I mean, we really need, with all the problems that we've had, even with that coverage, we really need to have that expertise internal, someone, you know, who has the requisite skills to make sure that our network is up and running, and not having so many of the outages that we've had.
And you feel that we're still kind of lacking in that department?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DeBravo.
Yes.
From Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Noah.
Yes.
Mrs. Simmons.
Yes.
And one. Yes.
Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration three motions and six resolutions on the consent agenda, these recommendations are in proper form and I request their approval.
No move.
Second.
Moved improperly seconded, any questions on consent?
Just have a couple of questions. On the first one, on the attorneys, out of the 12, I noticed that seven were from Cleveland, two from Akron, and then one kind of missing. Why is that?
It's just based on the expertise and round of quarters here who can address, you know, that more specifically.
I'd be happy. There are certain times when, for example, unfair labor practice, we might need to engage a law firm in Columbus, which would save us a lot of money for, instead of having a local attorney drive down to Columbus, and we all know that a court is more apt to, you know, get along and have a rapport with attorneys that they work with every day. So in the event, and honestly, we haven't really had a lot of dealings with our out-of-town attorneys, but they are there just in the event that we do have a need. Our Verzimac parents, they are from Cleveland, but they have been doing a stellar job when it comes to our tax cases. In fact, I was talking to Jack, they're the only law firm that, that actually helps make us money. They make a lot, they make us more money than we could, that we pay to them. But it's really based on experience, expertise, and then we do, we may need people throughout the state, just in the event that we engage a lawsuit.
I guess that's what I was pointing out, because seven are from Cleveland, one is from Columbus, one is from Aurora, I believe, and then there's two from Akron.
And the ones from Columbus, and I can give you the rundown, for example, Bill Keppel, he is located in Independence, his law firm has been the cornerstone of our negotiation process, he knows our collective writing agreement backwards and forwards, and so certain law firms we have established a relationship with. And so, so certain law firms we have established a relationship with. For example, Squire Sanders, we, we don't work with them very often, but in the event that there's a very technical financial issue that, and Jack will, will actually work with one particular lawyer from Squire Sanders. And that's the extent of, of what we use them for.
Just so, do we like send out RFPs for people to, or we just?
We, we, we try to engage or send out a lot of letters of, hey, are you interested? Do you offer discounts for political subdivisions, that sort of thing? And we try to have a good mix. You'll see how many lawyers, like for example, we have a gathering, Marvling, our small firm. We don't just hire the big firms, we hire small firms. Todd Hart, he's also one of our small firms. He's an expert in, in construction law. He's our guy when it comes to construction. He's, he's, he's our guy. Um, so each, each one is, is based on their individual specialty. But we do have an eclectic crew. We don't go just with one firm all the time.
Have a follow-up, because I have some of the same questions that Veronica did as far as concerned, um, just as a statement to buttress what Rhonda says when you do have, um, attorneys in a town where you're going to be litigating, it is important to have someone local unless you're working with them. I assume that you work with that person.
Absolutely.
Were a lot of these relationships established before you were in place as the legal head?
Um, you know, that's actually a good question. And, and Todd Hart, oh, when I came into the fray, I know Paul Fletcher and I, we worked, uh, a great deal with Todd Hart with, with the construction litigation. At that time, he was with a bigger firm. He has since gone out on his own, I think he has maybe two or three partners, small firm, sort of a boutique type firm. But he, his services were so good that we decided to go with him. He has a lesser fee, uh, but then again, it's, it's based on their, you know, we hire the best. If we, if we're in a, if we're in a lawsuit or, um, situation, we, we hire the best that we can get. And sometimes that's with big firms and sometimes it's with a smaller firm.
Okay, I don't want to belabor this for long, but I, just one more, just a thought. You know, I'm thinking local, Akron, I just didn't know, we just didn't have folks here. When you, when we talk about paying mileage, the difference between Cleveland to Columbus and Akron to Columbus is not really a real big deal. So I was just trying to figure out what was the rationale for why we had disproportionately the number of folks in Cleveland. I do like local, supporting local business. I know we've got some really good attorneys and firms here in Akron. And that was really the gist of my question. So I don't, I don't, I don't know, big or small, it just seems cut. It was strange to me because there's really only one firm in Columbus. Like I said, again, the bulk was from Columbus and there were two from Akron. So that was really the hard to find.
Well, I, I think I could certainly give you a, a printout. The, the majority of the law firms that we do use are from Akron. Uh, Bill Pebble, he's from Independence, right up the street, not very far away. And again, the, the law firms from Columbus, uh, very few and far between. But every once in a while, something specific will come up and we might need them to either consult with or maybe pick up the phone and ask them some questions.
Any other items?
Yeah, the other one was on item number seven. On the Department of Education Office for Children Nutrition. Love the fact that they're going to be doing some extra specials. I was wondering if, was there any interest in at least maybe piloting one of those schools in local? Since those are just, it's a supplement, it's not, it's not that it's a supplement for breakfast and for lunch, or would you be interested in looking at local?
We actually do engage local firms. It depends on exactly what is available at the time. Uh, we have a very short growing season in Ohio. And if they are available from a local firm within the timeline and if the cost is well in with the grant, then we do engage them. Other times, we engage local firms for regular school meals as well. But can you imagine us buying apples from a local farmer? We would take out the whole orchard. So some of, what we can do locally, we do the best to, but other times we have to engage, uh, in larger firms that can provide the quantity that we need.
Yeah, respectfully, we're talking about across the district. In this particular one, I'm talking about.
We will engage.
Pilot, there's, there's.
We'll engage those.
Four or five schools. My question was, are we interested in just maybe piloting one of those schools? Target local growers.
You have to understand that when you are serving food to anybody, whether it's local growers or, or larger growers, they have to meet the criteria to allow the food to come in, to be inspected and engaged in that way. That's why we're very careful. We do work with local growers as long as they can meet the criteria for those items that we're going to feed to the students.
I love that. But again, just a question was, are we interested in pilot, maybe piloting one and being intentional about identifying local growers? That's, that's the only question.
Okay, and I can't answer that because there are criteria for the grant that tell us what we can and cannot do, but we will be engaging the locals that we can. Is that more of what I'm trying to get across? Is that correct, what you want, you know, to make your understanding better? Okay.
And then number six, um, LeBron James Family Foundation. That $50,000 for the summer technology camp, that's part of the, the third grade freighters that during the summer, they take time and get skills on the computer. What is that?
There are elementary students who are, who are part of the wheels for education. So when they come in, yes, they'll get a technology camps, uh, increase their skills. So those 700 Samsung tablets that are out there, they'll have adequate.
Now, how many, how many students go through that?
Um, that one I am not sure, but I'll get some information through from Desiree Bowden on what our incoming class looks like.
Of course, we are happy that Mr. James will be closer to us now.
Yes.
Will make himself more available.
Back in Akron.
To the Akron community. Again, we always, with all the publicity and all that goes around, Akron is always forefront in his mind and family. And, uh, of course, that factored into, very much into his decision to come this way. So I know the president and members of the board and, uh, always appreciate what he does for Akron.
Just a follow-up question to Ron, uh, the fresh fruit and fresh vegetables. Fletcher said something to the effect that it's going to be, you know, studied and looked at for possible expansion.
Yes.
Is this an expansion over last year or is it just the same schools?
This is an expansion. We had only three schools last year. Now we're going to have four. And we also have rotated the schools. Some schools go, um, do it one year and then we rotate it to another one. So we've been very successful in getting these grants and this is actually our full care doing that.
Any other questions? Roll call, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DeBravo.
Yes.
Lamardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
I'm wondering.
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 18 Business Affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I request their approval.
Moved improperly seconded. Any questions regarding Business Affairs?
I have, um, I have one regarding item six, which is the, uh, money for the LEAP program. I'll address on this, but it looks to me like the money expended for 105 students, that embers is out to about $7,600 a student. I'm wondering, um, what is that for? That's almost a million dollars.
Right, LEAP is a program that will, um, take care of educating students who have severe behavioral problems. Um, they will take those students and, uh, versus them, you know, they may have some real serious, uh, issues, you know, with their education. And we just, for some of those students, don't have a program that can handle them. I mean, these are really high, um, you know, high-need students. And so we've had, we've had LEAP for, for quite some time. And I, Karen Lightell Anderson can address some of the particulars, I think, with some of those students.
Uh, where would, where does that fit, where is it?
Um, our KRG, we, we work with them, their alternative program includes Green.
Green, it's Green.
And for the special inside, um, they provide services for students who have intensive needs and social emotional.
You're a program provider, then where does that occur in what facility?
Green, they're located in Green.
Oh, is in Green, yeah.
It's actual off-site locations.
Okay, so you're for.
For the special inside.
I got it. So KRG is in, located in Green.
Yeah, it's on, on Turkey Foot Road. I've, I've been out there a number of times due to my job. And those kids are severe. We have kids that are at juvenile court system who attend school out there because they can't attend the Deborah schools. So there's a lot of them, not just from Akron Public, but from other schools as well. Barberton, uh, Green, Coventry and so forth.
And, and you contract with all the different school districts in here?
How KRG linked contracts with, but they provide contracted service for the Akron Public Schools. And it's for our most intensive students in terms of their social emotional needs.
Thank you.
And they've been effective.
That's all I have.
Any other questions on Business Affairs? Roll call, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
DeBravo.
Yes.
Lamardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Noah.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Lamardi.
Yes.
And Madam President, I have, um, hold on just. No, don't worry. I think we're basically going to introduce some new additions to our staff.
We knew there was some happy faces.
I was afraid I was going to get messes there for a second. All right, I have several introductions for you tonight. Um, first, if I could ask Thomas for you to stand up, please. Thomas actually goes by Matt. Um, and he started with Akron Public Schools in August of 1996 as a custodial worker. And through his 18 years of service, he's worked his way up as an assistant custodian and most recently as a head custodian since April of 2005. Mr. Frank brings his experience to Akron as a corporal in the United States Marine Corps and a petty officer with the United States Naval Reserve. There he was a member of the LEAP C, CB unit where he trained and supervised troops in carpentry, plumbing and basinery trades. He's being hired this evening as a custodian or night supervisor for custodial services. Congratulations.
I just like I said, I'm honored and humbled to be appointed this position. Um, I take my job very seriously. I look forward not only working for you, but with you. Um, my phone's always open. Um, I hope to, our department with Mr. Beverland, we can grow and become more professional, more productive and, you know, most importantly, a safe environment for the students. So I look forward to, uh, 22 years to go, at least that's what I'm planning to do. I'll be around a little while, but once again, I want to thank you, Mr. James, the school board, you know, resources, Mr. Fletcher. I really appreciate it and I'll do quite well as well.
Tracy Lambden, if you could stand, please. Tracy came to Akron Public Schools as an intervention specialist in 2010 and taught at Bridges Learning Center for several years. Before beginning his teaching career, Mr. Lambden spent nine years in the US military, serving in the Army and National Guard. He graduated from Mount Union College where he earned a bachelor's degree in physical education and health and later obtained his license as an intervention specialist and recently completed his master of arts degree from the University of Akron. Tracy worked with the Fordage County ESC, Alliance High School, Cloverleaf High School and Fairliss High School as an intervention specialist prior to coming to Akron schools. In 2013, he completed the aspiring principals academy with the district and was appointed to Akron Opportunity Center as a behavior coach for the 2013 and 14 school year. In June of this year, he received his principal's license. And in addition to his role as an instructional leader, Mr. Lewis has spent many years as a wrestling coach. He's been recommended tonight for a dean of students position and will be assigned to Litchfield Middle and Firestone High School.
Thanks, uh, just wanted to just my kid real quick. Haley, six and Grady, four to be five. And the principal will be calling me with him, but. I want to thank the school board. I've, I've been here for a short time and I see the great work here in Akron. And you, you can ask for a better place to work. And I'm glad to work with being kids AOC and Lee, you know, with Lee helping. You do everything you have to, I've been through other school districts and done. And it makes it just a joy to come to work every day. So thanks very much for this opportunity and I'll be working hard for you every day. Hand this to us. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Erica Glover, if you can, please. Erica Gant began working for us as a substitute teacher in 2002. And in 2007, she became a full-time intervention specialist at Bultle High School. She received her bachelor's degree in 2001 from the University of Akron and her master's degree also from Akron. She's currently working toward her doctorate at Cleveland State. In 2012, Erica received her principal license and completed the aspiring principal academy with us in 2014. Recently, she was assigned as an administrative intern at Bultle CLC. During her internship, Erica developed and implemented the OKBMU program designed to build student self-efficacy and self-esteem. She was a former all-star basketball player in the National Women's Basketball League and has spent much of her time mentoring youth through sports and other community organizations. Ms. Glover is being recommended tonight for a dean of students position and will be assigned to Bultle CLC. Congratulations.
I definitely first and foremost thank God for this opportunity, um, to work in such a great district that I see a lot of people that have seen me grow. So I'm appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of my, my, my parents who have taught me how to be a leader and given me opportunities to be a leader of my patients. So I asked them to go everywhere I could. Um, and, um, the opportunity to work at a, a school with such rich tradition, um, surrounded by, surrounded by such empowering people. Um, I couldn't have asked for it in any other way. I'm so happy to be a part of this district and a part of the school. And I love working with kids and for kids, so I thank you for that opportunity.
She has a, oh, I'm sorry. She has a lot of energy too. I've been watching her for a long time and seeing her work with the kids and it's, it's a joy that we have somebody has energy and has, that really wants to get out there and work with our kids. So thank you.
I was, you kind of, kind of made me disappoint, you know. I've, I've seen her work even before I even just thought it ever entered my mind to come to the school board. I know her commitment to our young folks. Um, and it's always, every time you see her, she's on fire about it. I kind of support my OKBMU, you know, because I have to prove this to the Patrick Lee office. It's still working board meeting, but thank you for her and I'm really proud of you.
Okay, Lakshmi Chari. Ms. Lakshmi Chari graduated from high school in Bangalore, India. She then obtained her bachelor's degree from the Women's Christian College in Madras, India in 1986. She earned her master's degree in elementary ed from SUNY College in Brockport, New York in 2002 and then studied special education at St. John Fisher College in Rochester, New York. She recently received her degree in educational administration from Kent State University as well as her principal license. Ms. Chari was employed as a special ed teacher for the Rochester City School District in New York for 10 years. This was an urban school district with a diverse student population. She organized an international day, developed behavior intervention plans and encouraged parental support to help meet and exceed state district standards. She then became intervention specialist for Kent State School this year and taught both middle school and elementary children. She modified the curriculum for students, provided comprehensive instruction and wrote IEPs and behavior intervention plans. She also worked under administrative internship while teaching for Kent. Ms. Chari's been recommend, being recommended tonight for an elementary assistant principal position. Not sure yet what location she will be at, we're still looking at that. But welcome, congratulations.
I feel really fortunate, um, that I would be part of the Akron Public Schools because I just graduated in May, so I think I'm really lucky to get this position. And my daughter obviously says that. Um, and I do thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to introduce my family. My husband Krishna, my daughter Sinuja.
And my son.
Pretty good. Thank you.
We have Mr. Thomas Adam Lewis, goes by Adam. Adam Lewis obtained his master's degree from Rolling Green University in 2007 and master's degree in 2009. He began his teaching career as an intervention specialist in 2008 with the Maysville Local School System in Sainsville. While at Maysville, Adam was the chair of the Special Education Department and was awarded several honors, including top teacher at Maysville Local School and educator of the year. Adam completed his principal license and administrative internship in 2011. And in 2013, he left Maysville to accept an assistant principal position at Garfield Academy in Canton, where he was quickly promoted to a principal and implemented several innovative programs during the school year, including implementation of standard-based grading system and several student data tracking systems. He spent several years as a coach for youth sports. Adam has coached both boys and girls soccer and basketball at the middle and high school level. Mr. Lewis has been recommended tonight for an assistant principal position and he will be assigned to Ohio Mills. be assigned to higher levels. Congratulations.
I just want to thank everyone. I'm very excited for this opportunity, uh, very humbled to join this district. Like you said, I just moved up to Northeastern Ohio last year. I love the area, heard nothing great, but great things about Akron Public Schools and I'm just very, very humbled for this opportunity and very excited, so thank you very much.
Well, welcome all of you. We're so very excited. It gets me all excited about the school year, although I don't like seeing the back to school sales yet. So welcome and thank you so much. If there's anyone who can steal my thunder anytime, it's Reverend Walker, but in my president's report today, I just wanted to, uh, take a moment to recognize, um, the fact that in our hearts and in Akron Public School, LeBron James never really left, so now he's just, uh, changing his zip code to match his heart as far as I'm concerned, so, um, I wanted to take a moment to welcome him back. He's always been a class act in every aspect that I've ever witnessed him in as far as off the court, um, when he's, especially when he's dealing with our students and so we continue to be thankful for that and we're glad that he's going to be closer so he can come visit us more often rather than, uh, left, so, um, that is all I have. I know Mr. Pearson has something, so I'm going to say that. We have a treasure report from Mr. Pearson, so I'm going to say that.
So a brief one. Um, the finances of the year, uh, you see the report, um, revenue came in, uh, roughly $130,000 more than normally projected. And most, uh, I've got a forecast and the expenditures were about, uh, $200,000 less than projected, so we've got, uh, roughly $400,000 more to start the, uh, new year off with. I'm sure you all, you're looking at the, uh, report and the one that I like looking at the most is the, uh, six-year comparison of both revenues and expenditures. And the good news is on that report is each year's, um, that six-year report, our wages have gone down percentage-wise and dollar-wise both. Our total expenses during that time period has gone down from $301,000 to $390,000. So, um, overall, our budget hasn't grown. The bad news is the one area that has grown dramatically is tuition. Our charter schools, our open enrollments, vouchers has gone from $36.890 in fiscal year '09 to $50.890 in fiscal year '14. By itself, it's out of another $14,000 to the budget. And that's something, obviously I've brought up before, I just want to reiterate it, um, maybe for the last time, uh, so that you're, you're aware of it. And, um, uh, that's probably the biggest challenge Akron Schools has right now is keeping students, you know.
You mentioned that the, uh, our expenditure as it relates to, uh, teachers, staff, et cetera has gone down, so that means we've reduced our total amount of staff, teachers, administrators.
Well, two things have occurred. We've reduced staff and our staff has gotten younger.
So we paid them less?
Correct. And that, that whole impact has really helped us tremendously. Now, the bad news on that is in the past, our, um, wages didn't grow as much because we had a lot of people maxed out on the salary schedule. Now, everyone's been growing, so you'll start seeing, um, higher increases, um, because of the steps, but our wages were 100, basically 167,000,000 in fiscal year '09 and they're $20,000,000 less now, 147,000. So that's, that's a good news type situation there.
Also in the news, uh, there's several states, North Carolina, I think, you know, a few others have made attempts to reduce expenditures by saying teachers go back and get a master's degree, et cetera, some other degree. They won't get any financial remuneration for that. Uh, I don't know what direction Ohio's going as it relates to that, um, but I assume if something like that happened, that would be a cap or something on, on the wages or if they're getting any kind of increase.
That would be negotiated items.
Right.
Obviously, it's deep, how do you test it?
Right. But I know they're doing that, I think in North Carolina, the state, you know, they're of course fighting that now to make some changes, so.
But then also to balance some of the, you know, lowering in wages, I'm going to be, uh, making proposals to decrease wages because of a couple of things. Um, one, and I'm, I don't mean to put Dr. Owens on the spot, but we did have a $600,000 reduction in Title I funds, which was going to fund five coaches. Um, we need seven coaches, so we were going to ask for two coaches to be paid for about a hundred thousand in salary and benefits, um, per position, but with that reduction in Title I funds, we're going to request that, uh, those five, that we were going to pay with Title I be pushed to the general fund along with two extras. Um, there's also, uh, we have, and this is the problem when we have grants like Race of the Top, we had paid for district data, uh, assessment specialists and another data specialist that had been working district-wide with our issues with data, which is even more important now. Those positions, because Race of the Top, of course, is gone, we'll be requesting to, um, add, uh, those into the general fund. And then our gifted program, we have identified additional, uh, students who would qualify for gifted services and feel the need to add three gifted teachers so those students can be serviced. So in all, I think it's about $1.18 million in staff that I'll have recommendations coming, um, before the board, uh, you know, to add, uh, those positions and have presentations from the various staff people exactly what those folks are going to be doing. A lot of the coaches are going to help with our English language arts and math, including hour two. Those are also areas that we've approved, new curriculum, and we really have to, um, you know, get on the ball with, uh, implementing that curriculum and the training associated with it with fidelity, so, um, again, I'll have some, uh, recommendations and information to the board shortly.
And then I know you had mentioned, we were talking about trying to keep that kindergarten to maybe up to third grade, the ratio, well, which might again also mean, um, including some additional teachers depending on what our enrollment.
Exactly, exactly.
Timmy Jackson.
Well, yeah, I just sort of piggyback, even though it's not staff, but while it is administration, I mean, we just, I assume we're going to see some changes there because we just okayed that software to see how competitive we were with the administration salaries and, which makes me think we're not if we're.
You know, it, it's, it's, um, it's a little of both. I mean, we've been, I think, competitive in getting some real good candidates to come in and, um, but in some cases, when we look at the salaries that some of these candidates are making at other districts, it's higher than what, you know, um, than, than what we actually pay. So we thought it would be prudent to just at least take a look and see what they are and then present the board with, uh, that information and maybe some recommendations.
Obviously, we're losing, we're missing out on good candidates.
Also, I just want to clarify, when you're saying coaches, you're, you mean coaches for teaching academics?
Yes, right, not athletic coaches, right.
Just wanted to clarify that, so it doesn't go out as $500,000.
Right.
Anything else?
Yeah, the last thing is, um, as David said, there could be an impact or there will be an impact on the, uh, next projection on wages due to the addition of those positions. Uh, the other thing to keep in mind, um, in that next projection, you shouldn't see a change, um, in the revenue at that time, um, but depending on what state formula is used in the next biennium, and I built the forecast around the belief that it was going to stay the same, um, there may be a change. If that, um, formula stays as it is and keeps growing, um, we're fine, but if it gets thrown out and they start with plan, I don't know if we have to let F or G, um, you know, it could be, uh, different than the revenue there. Um, and the other large dollar amount, uh, almost $6 million is our tangible reimbursement. Now, we have that through fiscal year '15 and I put that in the projection, but the governor, um, does not like that and I've repeated that over the years, that, that is a precarious revenue source. Hopefully, he will continue that and won't try to take it out of budget in the next biennium, but that is another area that, that could be precarious to us.
What's that amount again?
$5.6 million.
What is it about, and he doesn't like? What, what's, what, what is, you know, what he doesn't like about it?
Um, he doesn't feel that the state should have to reimburse us those dollars. He didn't want to be phased out completely.
I wonder what potential tax, the fiscal sort of to phase it out for?
Stop cat.
People like us that, that, you know, that's been extended a couple of times and...
So the cat tax replaced.
Well, we thought it was going to go away a couple of times and it stayed, so it's one of the, you know, if you do, then if you don't, as far as the projection goes.
But it's not close to what we used to get on that.
Oh, gosh, no. It's certainly one.
And I know this may or may not be the place, but I think there were articles in the paper and this is going to be coming rather quickly, uh, and the board, I assume the president should contend it and before you go elsewhere, probably have to make some decision, the county is going to have, we talked about taxes, they're bringing to bear, uh, a tax that affects, um, us as related to the paper because of our radio program and there are groups coming out pros and cons. And I noticed a con or, uh, against the, the tax because, and they put Akron Public Schools and they said, "We ought to support our own radio, the radio band," I guess, expanding, uh, the, uh, power, frequency, uh, give money for that. So I assume we'll be discussing that at some point to, to see where we are with that because anything that had Akron Public Schools, like my radar's going off and saying, you know, we don't want anything that's going to hamper us or see a, a, a negative in the public's eye as to what we're trying to do. If it's a radio station or if it's any of our, our activities that we do, so we need to be on the forefront and get whatever information we need to have because it's going to be talked about rather soon. So we have, um, our ducks in the order as to what we need to say about that if people do confront us.
All right. Mr. Jackson. Committee reports. Do you have anything to report on today?
Just thank you for the donations that we accepted. A laundry list of donations to Project Rise. We had 562 bus passes from Metro Assistance Group, cash donations from Wendy Burgoyne, from WM Reeves, from Joan Brownfield, from Ann Kindbaum, from Adam Stern and from St. Sebastian Pierce School, from John L. Hoffer and from Nancy Petcher, all cash donations to Project Rise. And then lastly, $526 from the Metro RTA to buy rulers for the, this summer's APS backpacking. I'm sure, I believe that's at the zoo as of right now. Thank you to all those donors.
Anyone else?
And the instructional policy and student achievement committee has been meeting with, uh, Dr. Matt Williams and we met the other day looking at, uh, curriculum and other items and there will be some, for, forthcoming from, or I guess making a presentation to the board along with, uh, Sister Sam and I.
Yeah, but we're all going to detail, so this is not a fire report, just, just want to, a shout out on the work that was done around the third grade reading unit, you know, without, we're sure coming out here soon. And you know, there was some, uh, and even with the Blizzard bags, uh, you know, I don't know if any other folks had any parents who say much to them about their concerns about why we did the Blizzard bag versus Alua coming to class and whether students are going to be able to access the information, but to see the numbers, and I know she'll be sharing that information as well, we did extraordinarily well and so I was glad to see, I know when we were doing the plan for our Department of Education, I hadn't really seen the, the numbers and we had included in the plan, but I, you know, I'm excited about the possibility of the beach bag and even the rain bag for spring. Um, I think it was a, it was a good approach and it seemed to have worked very well, so I'm grateful.
Anyone else? All right. Any unfinished business for new business?
We do have need for executive session today, so I do need a motion pursuant to Ohio Vice Code, Section 12, 1.22G1, for the purpose of considering employments of an employee or official in school districts.
Moved improperly segmented. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Sims.
Ms. Mark.
Yeah.